Oh, okay. Oh, I'm over here? You moving? Okay, yeah. That's what I said, just switch. Well.
No.
Yes, I go over here and play with the shell. Ooh, this seat feels good.
Oh, I have not got it. Should I mail her or... Okay.
So how's your summer been going? So, if you don't mind me asking, where is your... Oh, okay. Alrighty. I have a can. Would you send it? Is this for you?
Really? That's good.
Just like open up arena, yeah. Let it sit right there.
There you are.
Things are just so simple, you know, you're just... It's so simple you don't think about them.
That's good.
Oh, look at me, I've taken all my work here.
I would like to call the Peoria Public Schools District 150 Board of Education meeting for July 15th, 2013 to order. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Here. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item on our agenda is awards and recognition. And Dr. Layton? If there are none of those, we'll move to the announcements, please.
Yes, just want to like to announce that Saturday, July 27th, will be our annual Backpack Peoria. It will be held at the Dream Center from 9:00 to 2:00. Families can come out and pick up backpacks, receive free physicals, t-shirts, a lunch. Once again, this is our partnership with the Dream Center. Also Caterpillar is one of our supporters of this big event. Once again, next Saturday, July 27th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., or until we run out of backpacks. Also, last week, the district and the city of Peoria released a joint press release around the TIF partnership. We'll be working on a quarterly basis as we move forward, meeting as it relates to the downtown conservation TIF. Once again, we thank the city for partnering with us and allowing District 150 a seat at the table as we move forward. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other announcements from any of the board members? Reverend Butler?
I'd just like to announce that I will be attending a school board working group gathering at Stanford University in California this week. It's to help develop research, to help school boards to work better. And so I'm looking forward to coming back and sharing with the rest of you all what other school board members have said. There's only 10, maybe 20 throughout the country that have been invited to come for this particular event.
What... tell what the cost is.
And you might mention how that's being done?
Oh, that's being taken care of by a grant program through Stanford University. They are taking care of all the accommodations for the board members that they selected to bring in.
Very good. Looking forward to hearing what you can bring back from that. If there are no further announcements, anyone else? Okay. Approval of the minutes. I'd take a motion for approval of the minutes for the June 17th, 2013 meeting.
So move.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion of the minutes? There may be none. Madam Secretary, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. We've now come to the place on our agenda where members of the public may address the school board on any topic. Please come in.
Thank you. In reference to Mr. Atkins Dutrow, in reference to your comments about community schools, extended learning time after school and during the summer, maybe we should make that an agenda item for our strategic communications meeting that we have scheduled in August so that we can revisit and discuss that. There have been physical plant improvements throughout the district. Every school in our district has had some level of improvement as relates to the physical plants. By the opening of school, every school in the district will have enhanced security features with a buzzer system for allowing students in and out, staff members and visitors in and out of the buildings. Also, we've added some new additions. A new addition is going up right now at Calvin Coolidge as it relates to a new gym. Also, new multipurpose room will be going up at Roland Acres. Also, new entry at Franklin will be online and available for the public as we enter into the building. Once again, safety issues. So once again, we have addressed those physical plant issues throughout the district. Air conditioning is going in right now at Keller. Also, with the reopening of Woodruff, we made the necessary facility enhancements there. Also, Tree Wind, we've made enhancements on the first floor. We still need to make updates to the second floor. The stadium has not been a priority as it relates to improvements because we worked on the physical plants for our schools. For so many years, the buildings were neglected and we needed to bring those up to par as it relates to providing those services for the students that are there on a daily basis. So we have focused on the school buildings and addressing the safety issues in some of our schools. Our restrooms in some of our schools, especially our older schools, we need to work on improvements there. We've made those necessary improvements also to the classrooms. So that's been our focus over the past several years. The other comments as it relates to the stadium, we'll be addressing that later on tonight. As it relates to the textbook fees, just keep in mind that those fees were estimated by the speaker tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Information items, I don't believe we have anything under remarkable rule number one or number two. We do have under remarkable rule number three, respect our finances, purchase orders over $2,500. Dr. Finney?
Thank you, Paulson.
Do you have any questions about what was presented? Seeing none. Item number four, remarkable rule four, respect individual differences. Dr. Leighton?
Yes, since our last board meeting report on June 17th, 2013, we received five new Freedom of Information Act requests. Of these new requests, two were filled. There were three pending requests noted on the June 17th, 2013 board report. Those requests were filled. We have received 48 requests for this calendar year.
Thank you. We now move to the consent agenda. Agenda. Sorry. It's the Boston in me, I guess. And there is none, so I'm sorry. It just came out that way. Let me say this. Vice President Wolf, would you please read the consent agenda?
Thanks. The consent agenda tonight consists, first of all, of gifts to the school district. For this meeting, they total $1,805, which means a total year-to-date of a new fiscal year is $1,805. Some of the highlights are money given to the Woodruff Career and Technical Center for the Autobody class and some luncheon food given to Heinz School. The rest of it is donations to the District 150 Foundation golf outing in the amount of $14,557. The consent agenda also includes approval of the payment of bills, approval of the human resources report, approval of the payment for travel. Performance-based stipend, the proposed action is that the Board of Education is asked to approve the performance-based stipend for the superintendent for the 2012-2013 school year. Is within the board's ability to offer the superintendent a performance-based stipend up to $10,000 based on contract language. Is the board's desire to recognize Dr. Leighton's performance in reaching her goals and exceeding expectations with other accomplishments. Item six is the FY 2014 contract between the University of Illinois and School District 150. The proposed action is that the Board of Education authorize a mutual agreement between the Board of Trustees of the University of Illinois and District 150 for diagnosis of special education children with health and/or physical impairments at a cost not to exceed $5,000. This agreement will be funded through the IDEA grant, which is the federal special education grant. Number seven is the Family Core Contract Approval Counseling Services. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the attached contract with Family Core to provide eight full-time family school liaisons for the school-based attendance intervention and suspension expulsion prevention services to at-risk students attending Calvin Coolidge. One full-time, Woodruff Wilson one full-time, Manual Academy one full-time, Heinz one full-time, Franklin one full-time, Lincoln one full-time, Keller one half-full-time, or one half-time, Thomas Jefferson one half, Northmore one half, and Charter Oak one half. The total cost of this one-year contract is $343,536, which includes services in a case management format in order to address the needs of at-risk students. Funding for the Family Core will be through Title I. And number eight is Board Policy 7:210. The proposed action is that the Board of Education waive the first reading and approve the changes made to Board Policy 7:210 as presented. This is actually a portion of the expulsion policy that includes no changes to the policy itself, but some cleanup of language that the recommendation has come from the attorneys. And that is why we are waiving the first reading is because it's sort of And that is why we are waiving the first reading is because it's sort of a housekeeping issue. That is the consent agenda for tonight.
Thank you, Vice President Wolfmeyer. Would any member of the board like to have any of these items pulled for a separate vote?
Item four.
Ms. Ross asked for item four. Anything else? Therefore, with the exclusion of item four, could we have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
Still moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Let's have discussion. Let's first turn to item number five, the performance-based stipend. And as the outgoing president, Mr. Crawford, would you please comment on that first and then other members, please add to that?
Yes. Thank you, President Cloyde. We are voting on the performance-based stipend this evening for Dr. Lathan in the amount of $10,000 based upon, that is available to her under the contract. I for one will be supporting this stipend. Board members have regularly commented in this evaluation period of the continued curriculum improvement we've noticed at our schools. We've had increased improvements in Avid implementation. We also have increased focus on our gifted, enriched, and IB programs. Our test scores are headed in the right direction. Now, some of our schools are not where they need to be, but it, I believe, and I believe other board members believe, that Dr. Lathan has exhibited a leadership that is getting us headed in that right direction and is making the necessary curriculum changes and improvements that will allow our schools to continue to improve. Also, we've had additional staff added to our schools in the form of social workers, guidance counselors at our grade schools. And we've also had a focus on our technology needs that have increased over the year, that have increased in this past year. We also are, have begins, we've seen a culture develop with Dr. Lathan's leadership, a culture I think that is represented in all of our staff. They seem to be buying in. We see that regularly in our board presentations, and I know that when board members visit schools, they also regularly provide feedback about how Dr. Lathan's plan and the culture she is trying to embody within the district is, is being accepted and lived. The, we saw some, the special education procedures in particular were cleaned up this year. And again, staff communication continues to be a plus. I know that board members are concerned about ongoing AYP concerns as standards get more difficult. To me, we still, but we are working on those and we're making improvements in meeting AYP. And of course, discipline, I believe, is always an ongoing concern with this board. And I know that that is being addressed through further implementation with PVIS. And I'm certain that that will be a regular topic at our board meetings in the year to come. Regarding our facilities, Dr. Lathan, as she mentioned in her response to the audience presentation, we have seen renovations at all of our schools under your administration. Central is beautiful. Look at what we're doing over there. Completed Harrison, Glen Oak, Lincoln. We've had the improvements at Calvin Coolidge, Keller, the gyms at Richwoods, Manual Gym Floors. And I think that you have worked well with Dr. Kenny in bringing those facility improvements to reality and making sure that our, that our kids have the best, the best schools in which to learn and grow. And I think we still are concerned about, you know, various, where do we go from here? But I, you have demonstrated a leadership that shows you are willing to address those problems, have a plan to discuss our best use of our properties and how we are going to meet, and then develop a plan of how we will meet that and allow for board comment and public comment. In all, Dr. Lathan, I've been very impressed with the, the best I think a superintendent can do in terms of interacting with her board is making sure that the board has the right information before it. I would invite anybody in the public to come to our meetings next year. The information items when schools in session really provide you a glimpse of what great changes are being made within this district. You will be impressed with the staff, the teachers and administrators that make their presentations and show you about, and educate you on all the changes, curriculum, facility, and otherwise that are being done in this district. Again, Dr. Lathan arrived here a few years ago with the directive to bring about change. I think she has done that. And again, that is why I am supporting item number five on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Other members of the board care to speak? Ms. Till?
Chris hit on a lot of the things I highlighted in my comments to the board. I would just, again, highlight the addition of social workers and counselors across the district. That's so important for our children, especially who are in home crisis situations. The implementation of the IB program and gifted pullouts, updates and unification to the curriculum, the implementation of the teacher evaluation system, which while I remain unconvinced this is a good law, it is the law. And I think that the district did an excellent job, a great job, working with the teachers and putting in place an evaluation system that everyone is as on board with as we can be with a bad law, and really led the way with that. There's been a lot of cleanup, which I know that you guys don't see a whole lot of, but a lot of cleanup in procedures, in finance, in payroll, in issues like that, that just runs a lot smoother. And we spend a lot less time in a crisis situation trying to deal with that. And you did not know you were going to have so much of that coming in. So, you really had to learn a lot about that to get, to doing that. And while, you know, I look forward to our leadership pipeline developing more, we, you have brought some stability into the upper echelons and we're starting to get the right people in the right places. And I would, you know, it is a team effort supporting you. I would especially highlight Dr. Kenny's work, especially with facilities. And I guess I don't see Dr. Kennedy, but Dr. Kennedy with the curriculum work been fantastic. And so, bringing those people in, it's been fantastic.
Thank you. Any other members? Ms. Kasten?
I don't want to just repeat everything that everyone else has said, but I think as a board, we are totally in agreement with what has been stated by Mr. Crawford as well as Ms. Patel. Couple of things that I would like to add to that is, you know, I know it has not been an easy job to be the superintendent of District 150. And we as a board know as well as anyone else. One of the things that really, really sticks with me is your, the way that you are wanting to try to see if we can do something about the discipline, discipline problem that we, that exists in this district. We all know that it's not just affecting one school, it's affecting all of the schools in the district. So, no one is, no school is exempt from this problem. And I commend you for recognizing that and wanting to do something about it because either we, as Ms. Ross constantly says, either we pay now or we pay later. And so, if we try to correct the problem with social workers being put into the primary schools, and if we're trying to get it from that level and move it on, on up, maybe that we can stop some of these problems before they get out of hand. Another area that I commend you for is that I know it was a, it was a area that, with Woodruff closing, but what has been done with Woodruff has been outstanding. One of the things that I always say is that everyone that comes, that goes to high school does not always, for one reason or another, want to go or cannot attend college. So, by putting these vocational courses into place at Woodruff has been, has been really, really a great thing. I've been over to Woodruff, there are so many people that are in those classes that are just, you know, they're excited about what they've learned and where they're going. The cosmetology school and with this year, bringing in the Barber College. So, these vocations are at least giving our children an opportunity to do something else, taking that first step. So, there are a lot of areas that, that Dr. Lathan has seen in her vision and has implemented them along with the blessing of this board. She is to be commended for all of the hard work. We don't always see eye to eye, but at least we agree to disagree. So, again, to Dr. Lathan, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kasten. Ms. Ross?
Well, a few things I was going to talk about. I think that most of you out there are educated individuals and understand how long it takes to change systems. Some of the people around this horseshoe were not here when we hired Dr. Lathan. And so, they get secondhand information on what we, what the expectations were. Dr. Lathan and I by no means always get along, but one of the things I like about her is she listens to what we say and try to keep us updated and actually take those things and go back and say, okay, well, maybe I can, I can, you know, work on that or do something different. But I would say ninety, ninety percent of the time, we, you know, we're okay. But as you know, I've always been a proponent for public education, especially here in District 150. Some of my previous board members in the audience know that I've always stood for children. And so, if I didn't, and as I said, it takes at least five years in many cases to turn a system around. And what I've seen her do is to put, is to work toward putting systems in place. You know, you can't see all of the results right up front, but if the system's in place, then eventually you have to realize the benefits of those systems. For instance, you know, for years I spent on committees for the Discipline Committee. We actually, my committee and us and, and public, some of the public put together those discipline policies to, but then we had another, we had three superintendents to come in between those times. And so, it's hard to implement something somebody else is going to do. Some of you were on that, on those committees. But some of those, those policies still stand and procedures still stand. No matter what we do, we can't seem to get away from it. But some of the things I've seen put in place, like the Elite Program. Now, of course, it's not a panacea, it's not an answer to everything, but it works and it has worked. And now, with the expansion of a second school, we always talk about, the teachers always said that I can teach, but I can't teach with the behaviors that I'm exhibiting in the classroom. So, for those of you who are teachers, if you talk to some of the teachers who are working in those schools where the behavior is not as big of an issue, that gives you an opportunity to do whatever you are trained to do. That's my opinion, and I think it works because I've seen it work. So, everybody else has said some of those other things. I'm most proud of the Parent University, which I have worked on for years, and the vocational entity that's at Woodruff. We now have a natural hair care school, and there are 68 students signed up for next year in the natural hair care school. Think about it. Those young people can go and make a living for themselves just doing the things like what's on my hair, my head, braids and twists and all those kinds of things. And you know, maybe they, maybe that's their passion, maybe that's what they like to do. I'm saying reaching, stepping outside of the norm and recognizing that, that there are people who, students who need something extra. Like myself, I went to cosmetology school, but I thought, well, I don't want to do hair the rest of my life, so I went back to school and I became a counselor. But I still can do hair. And so, anyway, that's just part of it. I wanted to just say that, again, if you weren't there from the beginning, then you probably don't know what we ask for. And I think what we asked for was over and above what was reasonable at the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Erin Butler?
Yes, Mr. Cloyde, I want to add something to the conversation as well, where others have spoken about the improvements that have come through staffing, programming, and facilities. I want to talk about community relationships, and I believe that's so important to the issue that is now on the table with us regarding the Peoria Stadium. Dr. Lathan has been able to regain good relationship with those other governments that we work with. And that's very important because we are presented with a situation now that requires a relationship of unity in the community about the Peoria Stadium and what works best. So, I have been impressed. I came in at the time as well, and Mrs. Wolfmeyer and I, when we watched you, Dr. Lathan, rebuild those relationships for such a time as this, to be able to take on these issues that involve the other governments in the community. So, thank you.
Vice President Wolfmeyer?
I echo most of what's already been said. I honestly feel this is her third year, and I would say I think this has been one of her most difficult years, even, even more difficult than the first year when she was trying to get acclimated. This has been a year where she's had to deal a lot with building the relationships and the outside entities. And I would be willing to bet in a lot of school districts, that's not a superintendent's job, but it is here, and it's very important. Another thing that's, that's happened this year and in the last year and a half is I believe you've either extended or settled contracts with almost all seven of our negotiating groups. We have one pending that we hopefully is going to come in August. That is huge, huge, not only for us as a board and the administration, but for the employees to know where they're at and where they're going for the next few years. That is huge. Woodruff is a big thing. We did save $3 million a year on Woodruff, but the whole idea with saving that money was that it was going to be available for other programs. It has been years, absolutely, I don't know how many years, since we've had any vocational classes in this district. And we have a fabulous vocational program down there that is just getting better by leaps and bounds. And I think that's a good use of that money. We don't always agree also, but the one thing I respect Dr. Lathan for is even as a board member, if, if she has beliefs and feels something is right, she stands her ground. The only thing is, she always has the documentation and the information to back up where she's coming from. And very seldom do we have to agree to disagree. Sometimes I just have to say, okay, you're right, or vice versa sometimes. But the one other thing I really like about her versus some other administrations is whenever we are presented with decisions to be made, we're never just given one option. She always has options so that we can look at different things and different ways to do things. And I think that's very, very important because just to be given a thing to vote up or down, if you say no, then where do you go from there? And there are always other options that we can look to, or she has a Plan B if the board decides they don't want to do something the way she has proposed it. So, for all of those things, I thank you. And Mrs. Ross is right. We probably asked more than we really should have when, when she first came on board and she stayed. That was my, my thing at the end of the first year, she was sticking around. And I hope it's gotten better and easier for her. I know it has for me as a board member, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just as a reminder, we're still on item number five on the consent agenda. Well, I would just add this and not to belabor the point, but I think the, the fact that we have met the responsibilities of the state of Illinois in terms of our teacher and principal evaluation, three years ahead of the deadline. The district is now, in effect, a, a model for other school districts in terms of how they approach that. And it was done in a way that I think was, I would call it code determination, where both the union and the administration worked in equal numbers on that over a period of time and did so. It's not perfect, but I think everybody knows that there's goodwill involved here and that people will do the right thing, and we will continue to have good conversations about it as time goes on and hopefully get it better. But I think that's a tremendous leadership demonstration in this state, and I think people don't really understand that. The second is, I believe with one exception, every NWEA score in the district increased over the prior year at the end of the year. Now, we don't have the ISAT scores because they take the tests in March and the state of Illinois gets us the information on those in September, which is remarkable, they can do it that quickly. But the point here is that the things that we can But the point here is that the things that we can measure on standardized tests demonstrate that the schools that we have here, twenty-six to twenty-seven, increased their scores in math and reading in NWEA over the prior year. That's a pretty significant demonstration. And they also improved their scores over the start of the year. I believe every school improved their scores over the start of the year to the end of the year. Those are real solid numbers. There's no fudging those, they are standardized tests. So, that's the second thing. The third thing is, and Ms. Wolfmeyer touched on, and that is settling of the labor contracts. I know that at least three of those occasions, and no offense to our council, who we greatly appreciate, three of those were settled without any outside legal expense, saving the district over $200,000 approximately. So, if you take a look at what was accomplished, we got those contracts settled, we didn't spend a lot of money on outside legal support because it was done with the staff and the people we have here. And I think those are three examples of what Dr. Lathan has brought to this, and for that reason, I agree with this and support it. So, having said that, let's move on. Dr. Lathan, could you comment briefly on item six, which is the contract with the University of Illinois and the IDEA grant?
Yes, item number six is for psychiatric evaluations when we have students that need to be referred outside of the district. We have a contract with U of I to conduct those different evaluations, and so that amount will not exceed $5,000. If by chance we reach that number, based on a certain number of students, then we bring a contract back to the board. But annually, we do have some students that are in need of psychiatric evaluations that we cannot perform here in the district. So, that's item number six.
Could you also then just speak to item number seven about the counseling services as well?
Yes.
Keep on going.
Keep going. As it relates to the Family Corps contract, once again, you've already heard, one of our focus areas is providing those support services as it relates to counseling or social work services. The Family Corps contract monies will come out of the schools Title I funds to support those. Family Corps has been in the district for a number of years. Individual schools in the past have contracted with them for services. Once again, we're trying to streamline everything and make sure that we have, all schools have a baseline of services, and so you'll see where some schools have one FTE, some schools have a half of FTE. It's based on that school's Title I allocations. And so, we're looking at providing those services through Family Corps for the upcoming school year. Those services include mentoring, participating as an active member of the universal leadership team, and our PBIS team, home visits with parents, referral services, parent and child advocacy services, referrals for mental health assessments and treatments, referrals to SAS, referrals for domestic violence and sexual assault services. So, those are the types of services that Family Corps can provide.
Go ahead.
As it relates to number eight, and I will agree with one of our speakers tonight as it relates to our agenda items, we could have done a better job on item number eight in making sure that we had the accurate information, so we will do a better job with that next time. As it relates, it was some language cleanup, as Vice President Wolfmeyer stated earlier, from our attorneys. As you go back and look at the board policies, policies should be written so that it doesn't matter what superintendent or board members are here or whether the attorneys or staff members, but the parents have an easy-to-follow roadmap, and so the expulsion procedures is so that parents know what happens if a student is being referred for an expulsion. So, the old procedures had two actual steps. The new policy has more detail and outlines what the board will consider when they make the decision on the expulsion. It spells out what the hearing officers will respond to and that they will respond in writing, and that also that an expulsion can be imposed for up to two years. And so, that's what item number eight does today, is just lay out those procedures for parents.
Okay, any other questions or comments on the consent agenda with the exception of item number four? Madam Secretary, would you call a roll, please?
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Kostick?
Aye.
Ms. Doudal?
Aye.
Ms. Ross?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Seven I, zero, any questions?
Thank you. Item number four is payment for travel. Could we have a...
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? Madam Secretary, please.
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Kostick?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Ms. Doudal?
Aye.
Ms. Ross?
Upstayed.
Ms. Wolfmeyer?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Six I, one, two, three, motion carried.
Thank you. We now move to the deliberation agenda. Item number nine, approved lease agreement with Innovative Modular Systems. Proposed action is the Board of Education is asked to approve the three-year lease agreement for two sets of five-plex modular classroom facilities. One will be utilized at Charter Oak Primary and the other at Lindbergh Middle School to provide classrooms due to an increase in student enrollment. The cost for both units is $8,480 per month. There is an additional one-time IMS charge of $69,710 for delivery and setup of the facilities. Could I have a motion and a second on this, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Dr. Lathan, could you provide some details on this, please?
Yes, so the company is Innovative Modular Solutions. They are out of Bolinbrook, Illinois. The address is 297 East South Frontage Road, and so you're welcome to go to that website. And so, let's talk about the process. In May, we presented to the board the information as it relates to No Child Left Behind, and that would be great to our PFT president if we stood up and said we're going to push back to No Child Left Behind. However, when we are a district that is seventy-four percent children of poverty, we depend on those federal funds. If we do not follow the laws that relates to No Child Left Behind, we would put our federal funding in jeopardy, and then many of you would be standing back there at the podium saying that we were irresponsible. So, let's talk about what happened. Three hundred students applied for a request to transfer out of a school that has not made AYP for two consecutive years. By law, that is their right to transfer out. So, three hundred students applied. We are required to meet the five percent set aside, and so therefore, we're replacing two-hundred-and-thirty-one students based on their requests. Here are some things that we took...
I'm sorry, can you explain what the five percent set aside is?
Yes, we receive federal monies, and we have to set aside five percent for transportation, for No Child Left Behind. So, that set aside money is to transport students from their home school that did not make AYP to a school that made AYP. We shared with you a tentative list this past May of schools that were slated to be choice schools, that Keller, Northmore, Charter Oak, Hans were the primary schools, Calvin Coolidge with an asterisk by it because it was pending AYP results, and Lindbergh. Also, we were pending AYP results as it relates to Northmore. So, those were the schools that parents could select from, to attend if they were interested in opting out of their home school. Some of the options we looked at, because it was mentioned earlier, that board members are always presented with the options of what we behind the scenes, the staff, the things that we go through. No, we don't want to have to bus students from one side of the town, and it might be forty-five minutes. I've heard that from different speakers before, how long students might stay on a bus once you pick everyone up, but we must follow the law. So, we looked at a couple of things, and first we looked at raising the class size based on what the fire code would allow. That would possibly place up to thirty-five or more students in a classroom. So, one of the things that we use for determining which students are able to leave their home school and go to the school that's making AYP is the lowest performing students. So, think about that. The lowest performing students are the ones that are given priority to move from their home school to a school that's making AYP. So, if we were to take a class size up to thirty-five, and if you've been in some of our classrooms and have teachers here tonight, I thought I saw someone from Von Steuben, but I don't see her now, that was back there, I see Ms. Meyer. So, when you were a classroom teacher at Sterling a couple of years ago, how would you have felt with thirty-five students in, no air conditioning? How would have been able to manage thirty-five students in a classroom, and at least, let's say, eight to nine of those students were low-performing students, meaning they were not meeting or exceeding standards as it relates to the Illinois learning standards?
We've got some classes, honestly, where we've had that happen.
Right, and have you not sent emails, or, and we should not be doing this, but I'm bringing the input, and she's the vice president of the union, so I can answer those questions. But there's been a concern that we always address class size because of our contract book, we have suggested classroom sizes from our union. Kindergarten through first grade, below twenty-two students in a class. Second through fourth grade, below twenty-six students in a class. Fifth through eighth grade, below twenty-nine in a class. Below forty-five in PE, and this came straight out of the contract book. So, those are recommended class sizes that we as a district try to maintain. Sometimes we go over, I'm openly admitting that, sometimes we have to push a teacher assistant in the classroom because space will not allow adding those additional desks. So, that was one of the things that we looked at. Grave concerns about taking students and increasing the class size up when you have a high number of low-performing students moving into that classroom. We also looked at a satellite option. We had an option, we do have some closed facilities that we still own, and one of the options we looked at was Keller East, so the building right across the street from Keller. So, we looked at setting up a satellite school for Lindbergh, it's not going with the modular units, so that we would then place a grade level of students at Keller East. It would be a satellite school, the principal would need to go between the two schools and run that, and then we would bus the students back for PE and the other encores, classes, specials, art, music, and after-school activities that would need to happen there. We didn't feel that that was feasible or conducive for learning, so we eliminated that option. And then we landed on the portable classrooms. Also, Dunlap has expanded in the same company, it's a company that's being used by Dunlap School District. So, we went out and looked at the portables out at Dunlap. We actually went out, walked the buildings of the schools that were receiving students to see, first of all, could we get away with not putting the portables out there? What could we take away? Could we put art on a cart? Some of the schools already have art and music on a cart. The music and art teacher move from classroom to classroom. But at the end of the day, it was not conducive for learning if we did not add those portable classrooms. And so, we looked at Charter Oak and Lindbergh because that was where the highest number of requests were for those particular schools. And so, each of those schools will be basically adding an additional four classrooms. With those portable classrooms, restrooms will be in the actual, the portable units, also a staff restroom will be there, and then also a technology closet. The classrooms will be standard classrooms, carpeted classrooms, very nice, air-conditioned classrooms, but will meet the standards, and so that's how we landed on the recommendation of the portable classrooms. We've ordered the necessary materials as it relates to teachers' desk, students' desk, whiteboards, and also the whiteboards come attached too, but also the smart boards, the laptops that we would also need to address the technology needs, so that we don't have to worry about students going back and forth into the building for a computer lab. They will have laptop carts or iPad carts accessibility in those particular units. But once again, we must follow the federal mandate. Yes, the law could change this time next year, but until the law changes, we must follow that. And then the additional supports will be added to those schools as it relates to the special teachers that are needed, if any teacher assistants are needed, but we will make sure that the staff are in place, the principals are very well aware of what's happening, and they're making the necessary adjustment. We've posted the positions based on the union contract for filling the open positions at those schools. Questions from board members?
Questions? Yes, Ms. Kostick?
I think the only thing, I was mistaken, that did you not, did you cover where the physical, these buildings physically are going to be in reference to where the school is?
The portable, portable units?
Portable, portable.
Yes, for Lindbergh, and once again, it's a proposal, but once the company comes out to make the actual delivery, that could possibly change. To Lindbergh, if you're going in, it'll be to the right of the gym where the gym is located, and then there'll be a little connection there for them to enter into the building. For Charter Oak, if you are going down Orange Prairie, you'll look, you'll see two doors, you'll see the tennis courts at Charter Oak, you'll see two doors. The door that is closest to, on the right, the building will be connected there because there was a gas line where that second door is. Once again, all those things have to be worked out. Also, as it relates to, you talked about those partnerships and those relationships. We encountered an issue with Ameren or Silco coming out to get everything installed. We were able to connect with the mayor and the city manager to help make a phone call to say, you know, "We have children arriving on August the nineteenth, we need this to be an emergency call for that." So, all those things we did look at. Most school districts have the portable units as it relates to No Child Left Behind. Some own them, some lease them. It was our recommendation to lease for the three years. It was a question earlier also about that total, so it is $100,000, $101,760 annually in order to do that. But the students are coming from various schools, they're not all coming from one particular grade level. Similar to when students apply to the charter school, they come from different grade levels, and you address that as needed.
Questions here, Ms. Stell?
I just wanted to hear about, and I already actually asked this, but I want to repeat this, I would like to ask about tornado safety with portable buildings, big concern, fire safety, all of these other issues, evacuation ability.
And he's going to tell you that, but we also have a presentation on August the twelfth. We have our safety presentation based on your request at the May board meeting. So, Chief Collins is preparing for that, but Dr. Kenny will address it, but...
Yeah, we have to meet a special wind code that it can stand, I believe it's a hundred-and-twenty mile per hour winds. We'll have the fire alarm system all hooked up, it'll have the regular communications between the portable classrooms and the building as well. So, all of that, we're going through a regular building permit process with the ROE, just as we would if it was a regular construction job. So, we're submitting the architectural plans tomorrow, along with the building permit application, so we can keep the process rolling.
Okay, I would like to request that as we put these in, I want to make sure, before the school year starts, that the teachers who will be in these detached buildings know where to go in a tornado, and I would like the children to do a drill very early in the year.
And that's all part of the actual, the school presentation with the principal and going over the safety drill for the entire staff. That is a requirement every year, and then they have to submit that paperwork, also a requirement for the students. But once again, you're going to get a snapshot and a review of that at August twelve meeting.
You know, it's so much on my mind after the tornadoes this year, and I just want to make sure that with these portable classrooms, that the teachers and the students know exactly where to go for safety in case we do have a tornado in Peoria.
Ms. Wolfmeyer?
I just want to make sure it's clear that we understand it is $101,000 annually for both, not each, so it's $50,000 each. I just want to make sure that was clear.
Yes, and the one-time setup fee.
Right.
And if the law does change next year, really, when I was running for board, I remember saying I did not think No Child Left Behind would still be around in 2013 because it is a dumb law that creates dumb solutions to problems. If the law is gone next year and we no longer are required by law to do these transfer requests with three-year lease, what happens?
Those students are still entitled to stay at that school until they, so those students that are going in as fifth graders at Lindbergh are entitled to stay until their eighth grade year. So, we would still need that space if they choose to continue.
Other questions? Erin Butler?
For Dr. Kenny, I believe, an individual that came to the podium indicated they were confused by the line that talks about the cost for both units is $8,480 per month, and was saying, you know, is that for both units? They found it very vague. Can you make it...
Yeah, I think we just addressed that, that is for both units, not each unit. So, it's my fault, I'm the one who worded it.
Okay, well, I just, I was looking at that and seeing fairly clear.
Right.
Any other questions? I have one or two. Does this require us to hire additional staff to staff these facilities?
Yes, that's what I mentioned earlier, we posted for those classroom positions. Of course, after the first week or so of school, once registration's completed and students are there, we might have to continue to add additional staff, but that happens at all schools as we look at the beginning of the school year, especially with incoming kindergartners or fifth graders at the middle schools. And so, we will make those necessary allocations.
Further to the comments about No Child Left Behind, I was looking at the Illinois State Board of Education website the other day, and on their front page, here's a quote, and I'll just read it to you. "The unrealistic and punitive aspects of NCLB have made it counterproductive. Every year that NCLB moves forward with its unattainable goals, more schools are deemed to be failing, so much so that this year only eight high schools in Illinois were deemed to have made adequate progress." So, for the $71 billion that the US Department of Energy, Department of Education spends, that's what we get. So, with that, any other questions? Madam Secretary, would you call a roll, please, on item number nine?
Ms. Butler?
Aye.
Ms. Crawford?
Aye.
Ms. Doudal?
Aye.
Ms. Ross?
Aye.
Ms. Wolfmeyer? Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Seven I, zero, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-four, thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, thirty-nine, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, forty-four, forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-two, fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six, sixty-seven, sixty-eight, sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, seventy-three, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, eighty-three, eighty-four, eighty-five, eighty-six, eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, ninety, ninety-one, ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four, ninety-five, ninety-six, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, ninety-nine, one thousand, one thousand one, one thousand two, one thousand three, one thousand four, one thousand five, one thousand six, one thousand seven, one thousand eight, one thousand nine, one thousand ten, one thousand eleven, one thousand twelve,
athletic and recreational purposes. We need to understand the options and the associated costs and benefits of each. Now, one could reasonably ask, why don't you have all that put together by now? While we were waiting to hear from other government entities, we did not commit substantial staff time to work that was highly speculative and subject to actions by at least two other government entities. We have a preliminary vision of what could be done for the improvement of our high school outdoor athletic facilities, but details have not been developed. Second, our athletic directors and other faculty and staff are not on the job during the summer to provide important input for athletic facility planning. Their experience and knowledge is important, and the board should have the benefit of it. Third, the administration is dealing with a number of priority school issues with hard deadlines, such as preparing additional classrooms that must be ready by the August 19th start of school. On July 8, I met with Park Board President Tim Cassidy, and we had a very cordial and constructive discussion. We look forward to regular communications on issues that are of concern to both bodies. On July 10, along with Dr. Lathan and Dr. Kenny, we had our regular meeting with city leadership. Again, it was cordial, constructive, and will be the basis of ongoing communication as it has been for some time. In the interest of developing information and recommendations on the stadium issue, and in consideration of the constructive relationship we want to maintain with the Park District and the city of Peoria, we're asking the administration to pursue four issues, and to be prepared to present their recommendations and information to the board by our September 23 meeting. First, that we would have all of the available alternatives, along with the estimated costs for renovation or upgrades to the Peoria Stadium building and grounds. Second, concepts for upgrading the football fields at Peoria High School and Manuel Academy, focused on providing a safe, community-friendly athletic environment that will help retain student athletes and attract families to varsity competition on our high school grounds. Third, recommendations for scheduling district football facilities for the 2014-2015 season. And fourth, an evaluation of the effect, a 1 percent county school facility sales tax, which will be voted on in the March 14 election, what it would have, and what impact it would have on our resources for our schools and athletic facilities. I would also add that the state school code does not allow the school district to spend any money promoting any political or referenda. So we cannot spend any of our budget to promote that. So with those four items, Dr. Lathan, and Dr. Kenny, and others in the administration, we would sure appreciate your work on that. I know you have a lot to do starting schools, but I think this gives us a starting ground. And I think the board has heard from many people in the community. We've received many calls and emails and many people from the podium. We are well aware of your concerns, and what we need to do now is embark upon the process we wanted to start last fall, and now we're ready at that point because we have to go ahead with this. So with that, I'm going to leave that to you and the rest of the administration. Are there any other comments or presentations or suggestions? And Ms. Ross, would you please go?
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, those were very good suggestions. I think many of the public knows that we have several different committees, board-level committees. And what I'd like to do is to have that information brought to the building committee. If we're going to talk about process, then the building committee will then bring recommendations to the board, and then the board will direct the administration. That's basically how that goes. Since I just found out I'm chairing the, I was on the building committee last time, and I've chaired this time, I'd really like for us to do the procedural kinds of things that, so that everything is above board and the administration is not overwhelmed with things to do. So if we could, Dr. Kenny, set up a building committee meeting fairly soon, and we can address some of the issues that have been brought out.
Ms. Patel?
I do, well, I spoke with you very briefly about this. After these alternatives and information, after this information is presented to the board in late September, I would ask that the board think about how we can best put together a formalized process of gathering community input. We have been getting great input at the meetings and by email, but we will definitely want to, once we have alternatives in front of us and we're all looking at the same information, we will definitely want to hear community feedback on those options. And I'd like the board to think about how we can best facilitate that feedback, probably a committee of the whole meeting, maybe web forums, but different ways we can get that feedback so that we can hear from as many people as possible.
I think there are some very creative and interesting ways that can be done. I have awareness of at least one of those that might be very suitable for that. There may be others involved, and those are the sort of things that we need to consider.
And it raises some public meeting issues, I guess, but the forums, the listening forums, Dr. Lathan had your first and second year here around at the different schools. I don't know how many of you have attended those, but those were great, and those were really good ways of getting community input. So maybe there's a way we could structure something like that with many board members. I don't know when we start to have issues with public meetings for that, or if we're just listening, if that's all right. But I know you guys can figure that out.
And I think we have some idea.
Okay.
This year, the parent forums will be combined with parent university. So we'll open up with a parent forum input, and then we'll have breakout sessions. And so maybe through one of the breakout sessions, people could sign up for that track and provide that information outside of this other formalized process.
That'd be great.
Anyone else?
I would just add that the public ought to contact us with, if they're holding a forum, maybe a couple of board members could go and hear their concerns if they can't make it to a board meeting. Make yourselves a help for that.
Yeah, I was saying to people earlier that all my playgroup discussions lately have been dominated by this Walmart issue, and I am happy to come out to neighborhood association meetings or whatever else, and I know everyone else as well is delighted to do that.
Right, and I, just personally, I would say that, you know, I've been getting a lot of emails, and I welcome them, I welcome the comments. If you have a trouble getting ahold of me via email, I believe my phone number is published along with other folks, and feel free to give me a call. I prefer if it's done after working hours, but nevertheless, happy to come, address homeowner associations and those kinds of things. I know people have gotten up here and said they've been very concerned about transparency. I, if anything, at the end of this process, what I'd like for the public to say is to say that you are transparent. That is my greatest hope, and so keep the comments and suggestions coming.
Anyone else? Or better?
Mr. Floyd, I like, in your remarks prefacing what your outcome was of the meetings that you attended, is for the community to remember that this is not solely, again, a Peoria public school issue, and that as well as you establish our timelines and things that we are involved with, so be it with those other government entities. So I know it's good that you should always put a timeline to keep things moving and going along, but it may catch a snag here or there, you know. But all of that to just say, remember, there are the two other government entities that are weighing in on this matter as well. And so it's going to be a process, and it's going to be thought out.
Thank you. Ms. Wolfman?
I just want to say in my mind, there are actually two issues we're talking about here, and one is, of course, the stadium, the Walmart issue, and future use of the stadium. But as a board, the other thing that I think we ask for tonight, too, is we have to make a decision fairly soon, in the next few months, of the scheduling of athletic events for our high, our three high schools. And that's a separate issue to me than what we're going to do with the future of the stadium. So basically, I think what I'm asking for, and what you were asking for, is information on, again, how much it's going to cost to renovate the stadium, whether we come up with a way to use it through the community, or we decide to use it, what the cost and the information would be if we decide not to put that money into the stadium at this time and have alternate, and have to come up with alternate ideas. So to me, it's two separate issues that we have to deal with. And I think what we're asking for by the 23rd of September is the information that we need to help us have a discussion and make a decision on what we're going to do for scheduling for the fall of 2014.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I think we need to keep in mind, too, that the threshold question here is, what do we do with the property as if for our own use? And if that's the case, then if we retain it and do something with it for our own use, then that's it at that point. But there are two other bodies involved, at least. And I think in discussions that I've had with the leadership there, there's a lot of goodwill. I think there's a great interest in keeping communication open, and that's my intention, and I know that's been expressed by other board members as well. So we have heard you. This is not going to be a quick process. It will not get resolved next week. But what we do know is that we can do these things, we can communicate what's going on, we can cooperate and collaborate with other bodies of government, and we can do the right thing for the community and for the schools and the students that we educate in them. Anyone else? Last item report from board committees. Any committee reports? I don't think we've had many meetings lately because we just started the session. With that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, we are adjourned.[1785.86][1785.86]